Evening will come to order. Welcome, everyone. This is the City Council Rules and Government Relations Subcommittee meeting of February 27th, 2019, at 6:00 PM and change. There's a bunch of people here. Do we have minutes to approve?
I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
I can't do that.
All right, so I guess not.
You're gonna have to do the minutes.
Yeah, I'll look them up.
I left my binder upstairs with my rules stuff in it. I left my briefcase, but I don't want to hold you up. I'll get it after the meeting. I know what's in it, so.
All right, cool. All right. Public speak time. If anyone would like to make a statement before we begin. No? Okay. Cool. You would like to?
Yeah, I guess if...
Could you just state your name for the record?
My name's Rich Bowway. I live on Kent Street in town. I've been East Hampton resident since 1956. My family is on the home that I've been in. This is our second generation in a home that's always been attacked. The reason my wife and I are attending tonight is the abatement on the tax for seniors. Having been a long-time resident, I've seen where the tax rate has gone in the past few years and projection where it may go with the new schools. And I can tell you unequivocally that that will hurt. I feel most of the seniors on fixed income in town, it's gonna be tough. It's tough to do it now. The old, from what I understand, they used to be, was 70-years-old and then it was just, I don't know if it was income-dependent, but I think every senior got the break. If I'm, I might be wrong on that, but we don't get much information on it. But having an older woman even older than I am, next to me, she has received it for quite a few years. And now, I understand with the new schools, they're trying to reset this up. In reading the application for it, I don't, like, I wish I could, because I didn't know that, how they came up with the formula for the, that, to me, is absolutely ludicrous. It's so far off. You're at poverty, poverty level. Anybody within that confines of that description probably wouldn't be able to keep the home to begin with.
You're talking "they" by the state, you mean?
I guess, yeah. He said, "I didn't know that came up." Right. You know, and I, I don't know if, he said, "You may not be able to change it," but I can't say that it's, it's, you know, I mean, I worked my entire life, my wife has worked in school, and this will hurt us, the taxes. And I think that having paid taxes my entire life and two generations of paying property taxes, I think it's something that the town needs to look into because I really believe it's gonna hurt your seniors, especially the un-fixed income. You know, even if, you know, I mean, I didn't prepare as much as I wanted to. I mean, they always tell you what you need for retirement, and you laugh because they tell you it's a million and a half dollars, you know, and they're right, unfortunately. So for those of us that have put away, you know, two, three, or four, or $500,000, which has taken us a lifetime to do, that's still not enough to maintain a lifestyle that's not gonna, in other words, when you retire, the thing is to try and not go way down. In other words, yes, you have to cut back, yes, you gotta stop the trips to around the world, and I'm not saying to be extravagant, it's just the normal monthly bills that come in, utilities, all the things that we have to pay on a fixed income is extremely difficult to do where we are. So I guess that's where I'll start.
I agree with this gentleman. I've been around, you know, as long as he has, but maybe you have that time, 27-years. It's gonna hurt a lot of people, particularly with the school. And I'm not sure a lot of us who are seniors think anybody cares, to tell you the truth, but I'm having a little bit more confidence that someone does read this, because there's some stuff here that I think is potentially good. But you're gonna gentrify the community, is what's happening, and the school has a lot to do with it. These folks have paid their dues, have been here a long time. I don't think it's fair to ask them to educate the children of newcomers or anybody in town. I'd rather see an education fee to create some revenue in order to take the portion of the increase attributable to the school only on seniors' taxes and waive it or abate it. You folks are talking about abatement, I've been talking about waivers, delay it, put it on the end of the mortgage, or hold it and hold it for when the house is sold. There's, you know, many ways to skin a cat, and a few folks are sincerely interested in preventing people from being put out of their homes. You should do something about it. You can either guarantee that the city will not file liens and take property, because that's a good way for someone to lose a $300,000 house because they can't pay $5,000 worth of taxes. And as soon as cities put that lien on, that lien's available for sale, as I understand it. And if that happens, you'll have a public revolution on your hands, I think. So you really have to protect your seniors. And so you could do it by waivers, you can do it by abatements. It doesn't mean that the city has to deny itself the tax forever, it just means that you can delay that part of it. So personally, I have a bit of a problem. Akka's making me a supporter of charter schools. If we had charter schools, we wouldn't be paying $60 million bucks for a new school building. That would all be done privately, and people wouldn't have to pay those taxes. So if you wanna prevent charter schools and the movement toward charter schools, you have to help people not be put out of their homes. So that's my feeling, and I hope that you come about, because I know there's some building anger, and, you know, I think you're gonna see SOS, Save Our Seniors Movement, unless you actually do something. And if it doesn't happen, I'd be happy to actually put some energy into starting that, because you have to listen to people. We don't feel listened to right now. So that's all I have to say. I think we're at a very critical time in this city. And, you know, I knew some of you come down in Salem, you know, and go back years on the city council, and you know how that city council operated, and, you know, we have a blue-collar town here. It's changing, and you can't, you know, you can't just pull a carpet out from under people just like that. You have to have a transition. So that's my two cents, or maybe my five cents.
If somebody else doesn't?
Yeah. Sure, go for it.
On the schools, because I've been to town so long, I know how their history and kind of what's happened with the schools, which can be very frustrating considering the sidelines. The old East Hampton High School prior to the one that they just built, my sister attended it, was the first senior class in the old East Hampton High School. When they built that school, as I remember my dad discussing the, what the town had promised with that new school. It was built like an X, of course, we all remember, and they said if it needed any expansions, they could always go out. Or out, because it was four wings, and they could expand out. And they said it was the last school that East Hampton, oh, not that high school, that East Hampton, whatever. So I attended the school, it was a pretty good school. I still think it was in fair shape. I don't know if there's any issues like Whitebrook has with the building sinking and all the things that are going on. Mike Kowalsnyk, I went to school with Mikey, and we had, I had a few discussions with him on the, on the school, and he said the last, this high school was built more, from what I understand, was more politicking than it was the need for a school, because kids were opting to go out to the regional schools, and this, of course, you still have to pay for those, because they're resident children. And that was kind of the reason that school got pushed through, and I remember watching the meetings on television, and people were getting up and saying that they needed, they wanted their children to attend a brand-new school. Well, hell, yeah. Who doesn't want your kid to go to, if you're of school age? But anyways, they built a new high school. And when they did this, I remember some of the discussions were, "What about our grammar schools?" Maple Street, you know, the school, they're very, I attended Maple Street School, and it was old then, okay? But it's evidently built like a fortress, and it's still standing, okay? The other issue that I brought up with, you know, when they built Whitebrook, the middle school, they put that Olympic-sized pool in there, that took extra cost to taxpayers, and now, from what I understand, we haven't been able to use that pool in many years because of issues. Now, they're gonna combine all these three schools, and they're gonna build it in the same spot down there, if I'm not getting this wrong, and that may be. The reason that that school was issued was foundations and the way that the land is soft. So it's like, okay, so let's build three, a brand-new school there in the same spot. Makes no sense to me, but I'm not an engineer. But as a, you know, as, as, you know, we belong to the town, you hear these little things that go on, and you see the money being spent. You wonder sometimes, wouldn't there be a better way? Like, you know, shouldn't those, you know, they get addressed with the grammar schools and middle school, then something before they built a bloody new high school? Now, that's supposed to be, from what I understand, a $600 a year increase on high school only? Any answers for me? It was 200, and then 200, and 200, was supposed to be the increase for the new high school?
Did you talk to me about the tax rate?
Yeah, the tax rate.
I don't think that's correct, but I can't answer that. The tax rate has been set for the new school, and it's actually been going down over the years, because you pay less as you get. You're talking about the high school, right?
Right, right.
It's the rate, the cost of the high school toward the taxes has gone down.
Okay.
Since it started, because you pay less, you pay less over the years. I don't think it's the same every year. I don't remember though. I think, I think the premium and interest payment changes.
I apologize, because I'm just going by what I heard. The increase for the new high school was in, was supposed to be $600, okay? Now, the new school's coming, the estimate that we, that I heard was $1,200 more.
You're talking about the average taxpayer?
Yes.
No, that's wrong. It's like 700, or what, 650, for the average taxpayer?
650.
For the average taxpayer. And that's the $235,000 home? I forget.
Right.
That's what it was based on.
200, I have it actually. 256.
256. The average, the average median home is 256, and they estimated about $650,000 per year is the cost of the new school. Am I correct on that? I'm not positive.
That sounds familiar to me, but I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
So, I don't know how that helps, but that's...
All right, okay, so it's a $600 increase over a median income home, I get it. That's still a chunk for fixed income people.
That certainly is. I agree.
So I guess, to finish, having seen the history of the mistakes that were made with the schools, and with the, you know, the Olympic-sized pool that no one has been able to use for quite a few years, I'm still not sold that this town has the ability to run these things properly and to choose. You know, in talking with Mr. Kowalsnyk, he, in other words, the estimates they get on new schools were always, you have to take the lowest bid, and it's not always the best contractor, and I said, "Well, aren't they guaranteed these schools? You buy them card, you get a warranty. How come these schools..." He says, "No, once they hand you the keys and your inspections are done, you take ownership of the school." And I always thought, isn't there, is there a better way? Because shouldn't these buildings be guaranteed or something? I mean, this shouldn't, what happened at Whitebrook shouldn't have happened.
I don't know if that's pertinent to the, today, we're not debating a school, we're debating what seniors can be paid for.
Right, for a school.
Yeah, and I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it.
I don't mean to go off subject, it's just, that's the way I feel about it. If I'm getting it, in other words, my children are grown and gone a long time, okay? And I, you know, and I understand, I'm not anti-education by any means, but I just also think with the other issues that have been going on inside the schools, with what we hear in the public, to me, that's a lot more important than if you're putting a new building up. In other words, what goes on inside the school should be way more important than a brand-new building.
Thank you.
That happened.
Yeah, thanks for your time. Yeah, standing good. And just to go over one thing. We don't always, we're not, I mean, we sort of bend the rules in these subcommittees, but we're not supposed to necessarily debate back and forth, so if there's things that you say, and we don't necessarily respond, like during public speak time, we're mostly supposed to hear from the public, and then we're going to start deliberating. When we do, there might be times where I break, but we sort of have to do our thing just by the way that the council rules are set. So if anyone wants to weigh in before we start talking, this is the time, so.
Okay. When I originally said I didn't want to speak, I did not realize this would be the only public speak for the evening, and...
It won't necessar, I mean, we might, I might open it up at times, but we just, we do have a lot to get over.
I understand. I am also a senior citizen on a fixed income, and I agree with what these gentlemen have said, and would like to support in any way that I could, helping senior citizens afford to stay in their homes as long as they possibly can. But I'm here primarily to talk about the municipal light plant issue, because I have had a work history that has been very heavily involved with IT, and I recognize that the Internet is the new means of communication, and any community that does not have fast, affordable, and reliable Internet is not going to survive and do well in the future. It's going to be necessary, and this is the time to address it. There are lots of other communities in Massachusetts that are way ahead of us on this, and other communities that are basically where we are and are moving in the same direction. If we want to maintain East Hampton as a viable place to live and work in the future, we have to have good electronic communications available to everyone.
Okay, well, that's a different subject, okay?
Yeah. So we may or may not get to that. There's this first, but it is on our new business, so we'll see, we'll see how long we might be able to get to that.
Sure.
So, thanks for your time.
I just wanted to make a comment to the citizens here. I'm the one who put this out there, this particular, I don't have my stuff, what is it, 59?
41C and a half.
41C and a half. When I originally looked at this, we gave an abatement, and I think the family income for that abatement of $1,000 was listed at $28,000. And I think one of you gentlemen said that's poverty level right there. And so we, I looked at it and said, "Isn't there anything out there that can be done for some seniors making a little more than that, so we could provide an abatement?" And I looked at that, and I wanted to try and get something, and I think Tom brought up this particular law. We got into it and found out that only two cities have approved it, because it's very flawed. And because it's flawed, I'm no longer supporting it. However, some of the things you brought up, we've been looking into, and unfortunately, I'm not saying they're not possible, like the anti-lien thing, that might be possible. I'd like to do that. Anything we can do, I want to try and do. I'm just not sure this is the thing we can do, because it's flawed in a lot of ways, in my opinion.
And we'll get an opportunity.
We'll get an opportunity to debate that. But on the other hand, I do want to look at that, but the DOR, for instance, we were thinking, why can't we do our own program, our own abatement program? DOR, Department of Revenue, won't let us. I find that too bad. We have a home no charter, why can't we develop something that allows us to help certain class of individuals, such as not just senior citizens, but fixed-income people that might be on disability, or lower-income people that are having a hard time paying this? And I also don't want to see people lose their homes. God help us, no, which is why I looked at this. Unfortunately, I think there might be something better. And the last thing I want to say, to make sure everybody knows this, this has to go on the ballot. It's not something we approve. We approve putting it on the ballot for people to decide. And I wish that didn't have to happen, because the hard part for me is, I just asked the taxpayers to increase their taxes 20% to buy a school, and now I'm asking the general taxpayers to say, "Okay, we're gonna increase your taxes a little more in order to help seniors." And they might say yes, but I wish, I wish there was a better way to do it, rather than have to ask our taxpayers again. So that's where I'm at right now, and I know there might be different opinions from other councillors, but that's where I'm at right now. I want you to know, I did put this forward. I want to help seniors. This may not be the way to do it.
Thanks, I get that, because I talked to Tom about that too, and I know it's flawed, but, you know, you guys are creative, you don't have to follow...
Well, we're still looking. We got some time.
That's all I want to know, that someone really truly cares.
And I think, yeah, but we gotta dive into this, because we've got a lot to do, but I do think it's worth stating. Everyone here cares about the senior population. The senior population is substantial in East Hampton. The senior population can be credited for a lot of the really great things that exist in East Hampton. Nobody has any interest in doing anything to make life any harder for the senior population than it already is. And that being said, there, the options before us are complex, unlimited, and multifaceted. And so we might agree or disagree on certain things, but regardless of what happens tonight, this isn't the end of this conversation, so that, I just want to make that 100% clear. And with that said, I want to turn to the continuing business and to this topic. You might notice on your agendas, I split this out into four different groups: eligibility, size of benefit, number of eligible residents, and impact on taxpayers. The reason I did this is because it's a really complex issue, and I want to make sure that each aspect of the issue gets its due attention before I turn to the next issue. When we report things out of subcommittee, it's important to me personally that what I report on, that we've discussed every aspect of it, that when the rest of the councillors ask us questions, no one's going to ask a question, and I'm like, "Oh, jeez, we hadn't thought about that." Especially on something that's this important. So I'm gonna report out, these are my notes, this is a couple weeks of research on this topic, and let's just handle this, debate the pros and cons, see what we like and we don't like, section by section, and then we'll keep going. Is that, is that agreeable to the two of you?
It's agreeable, but it is, I'm here also defending our Board of Assessors and our assessor, who said no to this, they feel it's a flawed document, and they're not here to help us with, help me with this.
That was their choice.
I understand that, but I don't know if I'm, depending on how this goes, I'm not sure I can debate you, because you've done a lot more research. I would, to be honest with you, I'd rather they were here also for a, I could say to Lori, "Is that true? Is what Tom's saying, that true?"
I'm not...
And I'm really mad. I'm really angry that they're not here. I can understand, it's the snowing out, and she had to go home, she has a long drive, but I just, sorry, I'm venting.
All right. So the one thing I will say is, I sent this to Lori, she sent it back, and I asked her if she had any corrections. There was one correction that I accidentally wrote "single-family home" once, where I should have just wrote residences. It was late, and I, that was a typo, but yes, she was correct. Point is, she didn't disagree with any of this, other than that. So the material facts are what they are, I've got quotes from the law itself. I, I think we're on the same page, Lori and I, about the facts and what's gonna...
Oh, okay, sure.
And in fact, we might be closer than you might think on the actual, the policy. I just, I do want to make sure that we've discussed this and we fully understand what we're voting on one way or another, because it's important, and there's a lot of feelings about it. So, first of all, in terms of eligibility and age, it's 70. City Council can decrease it to 65. So in this way, it's no different than our current policy, which is the same way, it was 70, we brought it down to 65. In terms of who's eligible for it, occupancy, it is only on owner-owned, an owner, owner, everything's owner-owned, owner-occupied properties. The person has to have been domiciled, domiciled in the Commonwealth for the preceding 10 years, and to have owned the particular property for the past five years. And if it's a surviving spouse who inherits the property, that can be waived, provided that the deceased spouse was in there for the requisite amount of time. And the city can reduce the amount of time, the residency requirement within the Commonwealth to five years, but they still, regardless, they will have, have had to live in that home for five years. Income. So the taxpayers' income from all sources, and the all sources is kind of important going forward, can't exceed the amount that is set in Chapter 62, Section 6, Paragraphs, or subsection K.
Which is 58K now.
Yeah, so that is the...
That's the individual. It's important to note that, because all sources doesn't include the family, but when you're talking about the applicant, the applicant is the individual who's applying.
As the default, yes.
Right. In other words, they're all sources, they're assets, anything that they have.
Right, so it's...
Their maximum can be 58K.
Yeah, so the maximum can be 58. 58,000, and the city council can change that to be on a household basis. If they do, the circuit breaker exemption for, for a household is 88,000?
For married and household, 70, you have it here.
Yeah, for a head of household, it's 73, for married, it's 88. So my understanding is that basically, when, what we could do is, we could say, because there's this concern, right, that, well, what if you have, like, retired father who's living in a house and has, like, two kids who both have really great jobs and should just be chipping in more? Like, this isn't necessarily somebody that we should be asking the rest of the taxpayers to support, if there's like, if there's other people with good incomes in that house. So you can switch it to households, but if you do, that cap, as far as I can tell, and this is one thing that I, as far as I can tell, the cap automatically goes up to 88 at that point. The exact language is that they can utilize income limits on a household basis, rather than on a single applicant basis. So that's my current understanding of this, is that, what that means, and, I mean, we could follow up, but I'm pretty sure about this. What that means is that it goes to the 88.
So what you're saying is, if there's a person living, a retired person, who applies and is income-eligible, but they're living with someone who has a lot of assets, but they're living in the same home.
Well, assets don't matter, income.
Well, income.
Is that per year, excuse me?
I can't answer your question. They're in the same home. If we change the law, or we set the law to be only household, which we can set...
Yes.
It's 88,000 dollars.
Yes.
In the house.
Yes.
Which would, and their income would refer to any income derived from assets or anything.
Yes.
The income is whatever's on that IRS form.
Yeah.
So if they get income from stocks or something like that, or other annuities or whatever, it's part of that, it has to be 88K. We can set that.
Yes.
Do you think, Tom, that that goes against the asset loophole that Lori and the assessors were worried about?
My feeling...
Because they, they didn't seem to counter that argument.
Yeah, so, right, and this is, this is the thing. There is no asset limit of this, which is kind of troubling in this extent, because it could be...
That's the part that they really don't like, yeah.
Because people are like, "Well, what if you have a low income, but you have all of these assets?" My general thought is that if you have $1 million in assets, and you're getting a 5% rate of return on that, that's $50,000.
But here's the other thing, you have an asset. An asset might be a home you want.
Yeah, those are...
That's an asset. That's not an asset?
Well, that is an asset. What I'm saying, so right...
I think it's an asset.
Yes, that is, but when we're calculating, well, so there's no asset limit here. When we're talking 41C, our current thing, those are exempted from their asset limit. There is no asset limit here.
But what I'm saying to you is, just to get on Lori's side, and again, I wish she was here to help me with this.
Me too.
If I own a home, and it's $300,000.
Right.
It's an asset, and I owe no money on it, there's no mortgage. The mortgage is paid off, right?
Yep.
That asset could be used after we get the income, after they get their abatement, to borrow money on and be used to help them buy a new car or a new boat. All I'm saying is, there's assets that don't necessarily provide income that can be codified, but they are there. That's what I think, but again, they're not here. The assessors are worried about is that there are people that can use these loopholes, which is why the law's flawed to me, to get around that and not pay any taxes.
Right. I mean, I think what they're largely worried about, and again, they're not here to, yeah, what I think they were largely worried about was talking about somebody who might potentially have a ton of savings, and maybe, again, like, do I want to ask someone just starting a family to chip in extra to pay for someone if, in fact, they actually have substantial savings?
And savings don't, well, they might have income from that, but they'd be minor income, it would be savings.
Right, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't get a whole lot. But for the most part, if you've got substantial assets, like substantial assets, you're not sitting around in a checking account, right? You've got, like, some sort of retirement...
But if you have a large savings account...
Yeah.
That could be an asset that's not counted.
Yes, and it could be, and you are completely right. Yes, and it could be, and you are completely right.
And that's not what we're out here to help, we're out to help seniors on a fixed income that don't have those kind of assets.
You are completely correct.
That's what I'm worried about. That was the biggest thing they worried about.
I think that's a legitimate, I think it's a legitimate thing. I think that is, if we, you know, if we were to put this before the voters, one thing they need to know is that it's entirely possible that there are certain people in the community who might have, you know, a pension.
This loophole allows them to...
They might have a substantial amount of cash stocked away that they could help with, and that, in fact, that they are going to receive that. Now, my general view is that if you have any sort of, sort of, public assistance program, it's going to have eligibility requirements, and there are going to be people who fall through the cracks, and there's going to be people who receive benefits that they maybe shouldn't. There's just collateral damage when you do these things, they're never perfect.
Not if we could write our own, or we could do something that, that allows that eligibility to be defined by us.
I think that if we could write our own, and there is this thought, well, let's get to that later, but...
But that's important.
I think that we could write a better, I think that we could write a better law than this one, but any law that we write, there's going to be people that we go like, we've got to set it somewhere, and there's someone who has a reason why that's not fair to them.
But if there's loopholes, we can close them. The state's not about to. The state hasn't changed this, and only two cities approved it, because everybody's told them, you guys have a problem here. And it hasn't been approved by anybody out of, what, 360 towns, only two?
51, 300.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, why haven't they? But if we write our own law, and we find out, oh, there's a problem here, rewrite it. But we're not allowed to do that, which I'm hoping we can change.
Probably, yeah, so, okay, that's...
Sorry, I'm venting.
So, okay, do we all agree on this eligibility stuff? Like, where the facts are, even if we don't necessarily see any of them?
Well, I, I agree with you, and you agree with me that there is some loopholes in the assets, so we're okay with that.
Alright, let's move to the size of the benefit. Just real quick, is there anyone who wants to weigh in on anything they just heard, real quick? And just try and keep it to a minute or two, just because we've got...
If they have assets, they shouldn't be abated, they could be waived, maybe if they have a cash flow problem. But I agree, if somebody's sitting back with, you know, 2, 3, 4, 500,000, they can come up with 650 bucks.
So, that's not fair to the people that are really...
And if the taxpayers found out about that, we're the ones that are going to get crap for it, rightly so.
And just to be clear, like, deferral programs like that are things that the state does offer. I'm not exactly sure about whether East Hampton offers them. There are concerns about those programs, because there's often cases where people don't necessarily realize how much the interest accrues, and don't necessarily realize their own life expectancy, and end up in situations where their entire house is owned by the city. That's a conversation we can have at another time, because it's something else, like, look, I'm, I'm really trying here. I'm trying to look at every option. So, that is, that's a thing, yeah.
Okay.
I asked a question you couldn't answer at the time. Is that the 58,000, 73,000, and 88,000, is that per year?
That's the income limit that would be set by this law, or we could set it at 88 if we want to. If we want to make it a household income?
Yeah, and if we're going to do this, that would be frankly the way I would prefer to do it. But there, we'll get to it, there's problems that I see with that, but, okay. Size of benefit. So this is a big thing that we were talking about last time, is that, well, so, under the way that the law is currently written, you can have one of these clauses in place. We currently have a clause that transfers 1,000, or that abates $1,000 off the property tax of 60 of our most impoverished seniors.
And that with an income, household income limit of 28,000?
It's 25 for an individual, 29 for a married couple. So, we're talking about real, serious poverty. And that's with an asset limit of, I believe, $40,000, so, you know. These are people that need some serious help, and one thing there's a concern about is if we adopt this program that is a different size to the benefit, then...
Then it goes down.
It could potentially go down.
Because that was a big thing, as I recall, this replaces that program.
Yes, you can only have one property tax.
Which is a bad thing. We want to really help those people, and my goal was to bring it up, not to hurt the people we're already helping. But, so, you have any different facts, because...
Yeah, actually, I do, well, sort of. So, are you ready to do some arithmetic here?
Go ahead, go for it.
So, there's, basically, the formula that we are looking at is, is the median value for the house, times the tax rate per $1,000, times what I'm calling the 41C and a half rate, and that's a floating number between 5 and 20% that the city council gets to set. So the default is 5%, the city council can bring it up to as much as 20%. So...
That's what the abatement would be.
That's the size of the abatement.
Can be as high as 20%.
So as of November 2018, when we got the last, the report from the assessors, the median property was 256,000, or 256,678. The tax rate per thousand was $15.46. So if we applied, if we adopted this last year, or if we had adopted it for 2019, which we can't, because we have to put it on the ballot, if we adopted it today miraculously, scheduled special election, the benefit would be between $198.41 and $793.65.
And that 793 is a 20%?
That's a 20%.
But still less than 1,000?
It is. But the one thing that's worth mentioning is that this wouldn't go into effect until fiscal year 2020. In fiscal year 2020, we are expected to see a large increase in the tax rate, which is one of the variables that actually fuels this thing. So, I have a lot of problems with this program, but one thing that I do like about it, if we ever lived in a world where we could write our own, one thing I do like about it is this floating benefit, because a thousand...
We could change it from 5 to 20 any year?
Yeah, any given year, we could change it, but the thing is, like, $1,000 is a certain thing, like, last year, and then it's a different thing the year after that, because costs...
Inflation.
Right, because there's inflation. And because this is sort of pegged to the median value of the home, it actually kind of outpaces inflation a little bit, which I like. I really like programs that are, that are pegged to that. Now, in 41C, our current program, the income limits do rise with inflation, but the size of the benefit is stuck at $1,000. So, if we were to do this today, yeah, the people who are currently under this program, they'd get $200 less. If we had a 20% increase in our tax rate, that would go to a benefit that's in between $238.09 and $952.38 of the 20%.
It's closer to the value.
It's closer. And that's assuming no change to the median property value. If the median property value takes up 5% slightly, we're suddenly talking basically the same program. In future years, it could actually be higher.
For those people at $28,000?
For everyone. I mean, it would be greater than the 1,000.
Everyone, including the people who would speak through with the larger...
Yeah, including those people, yes, absolutely.
I don't dispute your numbers.
Okay.
I wouldn't dare.
I do think that that is just an important thing to talk about, because if I'm talking pros and cons, if I'm trying to give this a fair shake, I have to give them credit on that one. That's a smart way to do this, because it...
The floating thing.
Yeah, the floating thing, it makes sense, and if it got out of control and the abatement got too high, we could always bring that down from 20 down to 18 or something, to, but, but like, we have the ability here to actually have a little bit of control, and it, and the benefit is to some extent pegged to the size of, to what our property market is doing. I think this also is an important thing when we consider what other communities have adopted this. There are two communities with very, very high, I mean, one of them is on Martha's Vineyard, right? The other one's in Norfolk County. They're both in...
So they weren't worried about eligibility, because there's probably a lot of assets there and a lot of income, high income, so they were trying to help. The few people that live on Martha's Vineyard that have lower income.
In Akina, they're probably largely trying to help the people who live on the reservation.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that, oh, I didn't know that.
But the idea is that the size of this benefit for them likely is going to start over $1,000 pretty easily. So the, the problem that we were looking at is likely not for them. I'm not going to speculate as to why other communities did or did not do this, but I do, I mean, I think it's maybe interesting to point out that we are just now looking at it. It could be that there's a lot of other city councils that haven't gotten around to looking. It's not like we're the last one to consider whether or not this is a good idea. There might be other communities that would be interested, but I do see your point there. But it, it's worth mentioning that no community with, like, house values like ours has looked at this yet, so this, this is perhaps a unique...
Well, nobody's adopted it, you don't know if they've looked.
Yeah, that's true, that many could have looked at, we, no one's adopted it yet. Okay, so here's where this gets crazy to me.
Number of eligible residents?
Yeah, it's the number of eligible residents, because, to be perfectly honest, if it helped some folks who were living on a pension squeak by, I can completely live with the idea of a few bucks in my taxes going to support a handful of jerks who didn't need this and applied for it anyway. That, or, no, not jerks, whatever, you know what I mean, like, there's, yeah, there's people who are gaming the system, but there's also like a broader pool. But, but here's the thing about it, is that we need to have some sense of how many people are going to apply, because for every additional person that's, that's taking that thousand off, the way these programs work, and I wish Lori was here to confirm this for me...
So do I.
But, but my understanding of basically how these work is that we set a levy based on our budget and, you know, Prop 2 and a half and all that stuff, and then...
Based on the total property value in the town?
Well, we take the, yeah, so the idea is that we take the, the rate is set by the amount that we're going to need for the budget, and then we, we can't increase the levy by more than a certain amount. That's, that's why we were able to actually decrease the tax rate, because we voted on a budget, and to appropriate, to take the funds to pay for that budget, we didn't, we could actually bring the tax rate down because the property values...
Well, yeah, the property values went up. So we increased the amount of taxes we brought in, because the rate is based on the value of the homes. If the value of the homes goes up, the rate goes down, but we still increase taxes by 2.5%. And I do the math, so, if we kept the rate at the same level, and the value of the homes went up, then the increase would be a lot higher than 2.5%, which we're not allowed to do. Which I say, thank God.
I think that's a really good thing for a ton of reasons, but I do think that, let's, let's...
Anyway, go ahead with your eligibility, I mean, your residence.
Yeah, so, so, the thing is though, so if you apply to this program, you know, before the end of fiscal year, the idea is that the rest of the taxpayers are, like, the levy is still the same. Like, the amount, the total amount being taxed is still the same. So for every person that gets exempted, it's everyone else is paying a little bit more. So one person applies and gets 1,000, or, you know, whatever, $800, $1,000, somewhere like that. You know, spread between 7,000 houses, that's nothing, it's penis, you don't even notice it. But the next person that applies, the group of people who are on the hook for this shrinks the more people that apply.
Well, if you have 300 people applying, that's $300,000. $300,000 to the tax rate is a lot. If you remember, 2.5% increase in our taxes last year was only like 500. So $300,000, let's just use a round figure, 300 people are eligible. That's a lot of money that has to be spread out by, for the entire taxpayers, which are 300 less now. Does everybody understand that?
So...
Did I understand what I just said?
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, I mean, and if I look at this graph, we're talking about an eligibility of over 1,000, like, probably...
Well, up to 80, 7499, there's 100, it's over 1,000 people.
Over 1,000 people. So if everybody applied for it, that means the tax, the tax rate for the, of regular...
Goes up.
Now, you know, it should be noted, about a third of these people in this graph are probably renters. But, yeah, you could be looking at maybe 10% of households in East Hampton being eligible for this over the last few years.
And do we have any projections on what the potential cost of that would be to, you know...
I think that's one thing we could have asked Lori, but...
Yeah, I agree.
But that's the thing that scares me, is that we're asking the other taxpayers once again to come up with this money. I would rather have a way of helping seniors that doesn't ask our taxpayers to help, but we can find a way to create a program in which we're funding in a different way. I don't know what that would be. If we could write an abatement program that limits the kind of asset problems, and also eligibility for households that might be fairer.
Right, so...
I don't know.
I think, right, so if you look at, so the senior, the circuit breaker tax exemption is the basis for the, the income levels. So I did have that down here, too, I calculated that. And we're only seeing about 300 people, just, that's $300,000, right, it's no joke, but you're looking at the number, there could be maybe 700 people who are eligible. So we're looking at maybe half of those people actually.
350 people times $1,000, which is the maximum, which we were going to do it, I'd do 20%, I don't want to.
Yeah, of course, I agree.
If we didn't have all these loopholes.
Now, so, yeah, here's the part about this that sort of freaks me out a little bit. If you look at this graph, you look at 2,000...
Which graph are you looking at?
Sorry, the number of East Hampton seniors claiming circuit breaker tax exemptions.
Oh, do I not have that?
Here, I got it.
I have Lori's comments, is that not in your graph?
No, I've got one. Yeah. So page 2, bottom of the page.
Okay, but why don't I have it on here, because I have everything else?
I don't know, I dropped one, I understand, so...
I got it, I got it here, I'm just curious, because I can read this better. It just didn't come up, the graph didn't come into your, Lori must not have put it in her copy. Because I'm looking at her copy of your thing.
So I called the folks at the Division of Local Services and got them to give me this data. The dotted line is just a general projection. You'll see, when they started this program, 2001, when they started recording this, 50 people applied.
This is for East Hampton?
Yeah, in 2016, almost 300 applied. That's a six-fold increase in the number.
And they applied for the...
This is for the circuit breaker tax exemption, but for you to qualify for this, you have to have incomes that are the same limit.
28,000?
No, no, 58, or 88, 56 or 88.
You lost me.
Okay, so, remember we had in the eligibility, they're saying for this, for this...
58 as a single.
Yes, 58, or 88 as a couple.
Explain to me, I should know this, the circuit breaker tax exemption, as opposed to the abatement program that we've already...
So, the tax exemption is a state program that people already have the ability to apply for.
And it's a tax exemption for income, not for property taxes?
It's about, renters can apply for it, too, you have to have an income under a certain level, and the burden of your housing expenses, be that your...
But the tax they're exempting is income tax?
No, I think it's, yes, I think, you're right, I think that it's...
It's not property tax.
You're right, yes.
Okay, now I get what you're talking about.
But what 41C and a half does is, it says, our income limits are the income limits from the circuit breaker tax exemption. So the 58 and the 88, those come from that chapter.
You talked about that, right.
Yeah, so what I thought is, if we wanted to get a sense of how many people would be eligible to claim that, how many people are currently claiming the program that has the same? It's 300, up from 50 in 2001. Now maybe some of that is that the Council on Aging is doing a good job of publicizing the program.
That they have these things available, or I bet you they are.
It's, that's entirely possible, but it's just worth mentioning that it has increased over six times more people than it was the last year.
15 years, roughly.
Over 15 years. If you turn to the next page...
That might be baby boomers.
Yeah, it is, that's the thing, our biggest generation historically is entering retirement, and...
That would be me.
That's probably...
It is, I'm a baby boomer.
So, so if you look here, I've got, this is from, full disclosure, my shop. I work for the UMS Donahue Institute, and one of the things we do is provide the population projections for the state. So for East Hampton, in 2015, we were expecting, we were saying that about 18% of the population was over the age of 65. By 2035, we're looking at 31%.
Almost double. Well, no, it's eight, well, today, it's about, what, 19%, would you say?
Yeah, it's probably somewhere between 18 and 22, yeah.
Okay.
So, this is where I start to get concerned about this program.
Because it means it's going to go a hell of a lot higher than 300.
The median household income in East Hampton for a household over the age of 65 is $40,000 a year, which is sobering, and there's a lot...
And that's a household income, not an individual?
Yes, I mean, that includes many people whose households might be them in a, you know, at the Lathrop community, for instance, you know, so there's, and there's, there's a mix of things there, but there are, when you have a household or over the age of 65, the median income is $40,000 a year, which means that over half of households... which means that over half of households, I mean, it's also fair, sorry, this is complicated, this is like sort of nuanced, it's worth saying that when you look at those things, like probably out of the people who are living from a household income under forty thousand dollars a year, people who don't own their homes are probably highly overrepresented, overrepresented in that group. But we are looking at, you know, if you move that up to a household income of eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, it's probably fair to say that most of the seniors in East Hampton could qualify for this. Other than a small group, I mean, if you've got, or the senior homeowners, anyway. You're, you're looking at most of them being able to potentially qualify for this. And we're looking at that group potentially within the next twenty years going up over thirty percent. So.
It's like fifty, it's more than that.
It'd be interesting to see the projections around, if, if that was, if that, if those were the numbers and the people applied for it, what that would do to the tax base.
That's what I'm saying, is that if you've got a thousand doll, like if you've got one household asking for an abatement of a thousand dollars, right, and there's only two households that are, like, if there's two households that don't claim this for every one that does claim it, that's not really fair. It might be one for every four, one for every five. You're talking about a two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollar increase in people's property taxes to fund this program. And now, look, maybe the voters would say, small price to pay, I wanna make sure. But it's, that's a serious, that's a serious.
I can't do that, but the other thing that, on the good side here, something to consider, in ten years, the high school goes off the rules, that's a, these overrides that we just voted in are called dead exclusion, which means they're temporary. Once the loan's paid off, your taxes go down, you don't pay for them anymore. So in twenty years from now, two thousand and thirty-nine, this school goes away, the, the new school. And it would be very hard for this councilor, but I won't be on the council in two thousand and thirty-nine. I don't know if I'll be able to buy enough ground, but I see new tax increases. New tax increases based on new things we're gonna build?
Yeah, no, I mean.
I mean, it's, I, I, so, at least there's that fact that sobering if. I just don't see, these are the kinds of facts that you brought, and Tom, you've done a fantastic job with this, because these facts are very important. They're the kind of things the voters, I don't know how much they'll look at. They're gonna need to know them, though. I mean, even with the school project, we put out so much information. I'm not sure how many people understood everything about it. This is even more complicated. And if there's a fact like this, in two thousand and thirty-five, how many seniors there are gonna be that, and it might be two hundred and fifty dollars that you're gonna give, that's an important fact. I just don't know, if I'm, if I'm an advocate for this and I'm gonna market it, which I don't think as a councilor I can do ethically, I can only vote to have it on the ballot, there has to be a group that markets it, that would have to be part of the thing. And it would worry me, one of my reasons for not wanting to do a program that's so complicated and flawed is because the voter needs to be educated as to what they're voting on. And that, that's disturbing to me. Especially since you brought all this great information forward, a lot of it has to be put out there. If we're gonna say yes.
It's complicated.
It's hugely complicated.
I mean, I don't, I don't, and, and I asked some questions here, like, do, do you have an easy way of calculating what the marginal cost of homeowners would be, given the number of seniors receiving a given benefit? And Laurie responded, no, she doesn't have, I mean, I think that.
That's a crystal ball, isn't it?
There's, well, no, I mean, this is the sort of stuff I do at work all the time, where I say, if for instance, this was the value, and this was the tax rate, and this was the number of people who applied, what would the impact be to the median household? But like, but there are other things to consider here, I mean, like commercial property, we don't know the number of units, right? I mean, we're, we're gonna be adding a bunch of commercial property and residential property just with one ferry street, and presumably there's gonna be some other developments that, that spreads around the, the risk, there's, we don't know what, what the valuations of properties, there's, there's a ton to consider. It's very, it's super, super complicated, and, and.
I think that complication points to why a lot of cities and towns aren't looking at it.
Yeah, I think that that's part of it.
You ask the assessors to look at this, and they looked at all this, and they said, oh my God, this is very difficult for them to assess, and certainly for the voters.
Now, look.
It's unfortunate, because I want it to help, but this is not.
Yeah, so here's sort of, I feel like I'm in between a rock and a hard place here, because there's two conflicting things about this that drive me nuts. One is, um, lots and lots of people can apply to it, which in some ways is good, but I think it's like.
The loopholes are.
The loopholes and also like household income of eighty-eight, like, me and Kelsey don't have a household income of eighty-eight thousand.
And you want a home.
Yeah, we do, like, so we're talking about people who make more money than me and my girlfriend put together.
I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say this personally, when I retire, that's about what our income will be. And I would never apply for this, for this kind of abatement, because I feel that I'm out there trying to help people at twenty-eight or thirty thousand household income.
Yeah.
And, and, and all I'm saying is, to me, I looked at my income, that's without any debt, if I pay my debt off, it just makes, and, and I'm scared, but I also put in, I'm gonna pay a thousand dollars more per year in my taxes, I put that into my budget projection, and I'm looking at it and saying, I can make it without the debt I have, because I have a good retirement account, but on the other hand, a lot of people, they don't have that. And if eighty-eight thousand dollars is, makes me eligible, I don't know how many people out there have my ethic, I, I have to admit it, I don't know if I'm, I'm not trotting my own horn, but Jesus, I'm gonna apply for an abatement?
Yeah, I mean.
And if I'm a city council and I do that, you guys should put me on a tree. Look me on that.
Yeah, I mean, so, it's just, the fact that basically every, like, everyone can, who's basically over sixty-five, real, unless you're a millionaire, realistically, there's, what, I think I saw.
What did we say, our, our median household income is forty for seniors?
For households of, yeah, so, so you're, you can talk about two households being put together and still being able to apply for this, to me, that is concerning. When I initially saw this, what I thought is, what I, what I misunderstood is, I thought that it was fifty-six was the criteria, and that you can make that apply for, to be the household income instead of, and that that would trigger your ability to raise it up to eighty-eight, which would be fine, I could say, if you make sixty thousand, like, if you have a household income of sixty thousand, you know, that's two people living on thirty thousand dollars, that's, that's tough living, for sure. I'd be fine with that, eighty-eight gets a little, like.
And it doesn't include the assets which are not being counted.
Right, because if you own.
But any returns from the assets are.
If you make your thirty thousand dollars a year and you own your house outright, that's different than if you're making thirty thousand dollars a year and you're paying a mortgage.
But if you have a, a hundred thousand dollar savings account, and you take out five thousand dollars because you wanna buy a car, that's not reported anywhere.
No, no.
Not against your abatement request.
You're absolutely right.
That's, and, and, and a lot of people might have that.
Right, but if you have a, like a trust, for instance.
Well, yeah, you get income from that.
If you have a, like a big retirement account, if you have something like that.
Well, that's to be reported on your IRS form.
Yeah, then, so those things are counted, but you're right, if you just have like a bunch of cash sitting under, under a mattress somewhere, or in a bank account.
And if you borrow money against a, a mortgage, an equity loan, you can do that without having to report them.
I don't personally have an issue with that aspect of it, like, because.
Because you have to pay for it, yeah.
Well, yeah, because you're gonna go, if you're going into, like, no one should be going into debt to pay their taxes, that, just right, right off the bat.
Well, that's not why I'm saying we're gonna do that. They, they wanna buy a new truck or something, and they do that.
Sure, yeah, then, yeah, you could do that, okay, I mean.
I see somebody driving on a Mercedes and they have an abatement, that's a problem.
I think that.
It is.
I, at this point, am, like, it sucks, I really wanted to like this.
I got that, Tom.
Can I ask one question, Tom?
Yeah.
So, and I don't know, I don't know if we're gonna get to this, or, with the state reimbursing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, the state will reimburse for part of it, but the way that it's written up right now, it actually kind of screws us. Well, so first of all.
Because is it a guaranteed?
The thing is, well, I don't, so this is the kind of thing where I'd love to have, like, the assessors here, but like, it has this section where it says, um, if a city or town has elected to grant exemptions under clause forty-one C and a half, in lieu of this clause, and this was in clause forty-one, the number of the exemptions granted in such a city or town for purposes of this computation shall not exceed the number of exemptions granted under this clause, being clause forty-one, in, uh, such city or town in the most recent fiscal year for which such exemptions under this clause were granted. So I don't know when we adopted forty-one C, but you have to figure, since this, there's been this, like, expansion of the retired baby boomers, that whenever we last had forty-one, we probably had way less people applying for these kinds of programs, and as a result, like, no matter what we do, like, we're like weirdly capped at that level, which is really unfair.
As for reimbursement.
As for reimbursement, and even if we were to get around that, they said, if you get forty-one C and a half, the value exemptions granted, for the purpose of these exemptions shall not be greater than five hundred dollars per residence for which an exemption is granted. So even if we were to, even if they were to, for whatever reason, go really, go easy on us there, the most we're looking at is maybe the state covering half of this. Which is not nothing, I mean, half is better than nothing, but it's.
Right.
Basically what happens is that the legislature each year comes up with a certain number of, certain amount of money, and then it's spread between communities based on how many people got exemptions, but for cities like, almost all cities have forty-one C now, they're all being pegged to what their forty-one numbers were.
I also find the language purposely ambiguous, so that the state can change it at any time. I don't like, it, it, it's hard to read it, what you, when you, I, I listened to you just now, I'm like, oh my God.
You know, I was up till like two in the morning last night working on this, I worked, like, I got home at five and I worked till two in the morning.
You should pay him like a lawyer, every six minutes.
Wait, that's good. I'm open to discussing this, but in the meantime, um, all right.
That's our previous discussion.
Do, do we, like, I kinda wanna open this up one more time and see if anyone, like, having sat through all this, if anyone has any thoughts on this, 'cause I don't, I, I think, I, I would sort of like to move this out of subcommittee tonight, one way or another, but I wanna hear from anyone here first. So, anyone have any sort of closing thoughts?
Well, you know, I, I agree with you completely, I mean, you gotta do a spreadsheet on this, and you gotta take it out ten, twenty years to see what really happens, but of course, you can't predict what's happening ten years down the line with the way the world's going now, compared to what you could have done earlier, so I think the point you brought up are right. If we're, if some joker out there that's got three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars in the bank and is driving a Cadillac, tries to do this, we don't have any obligation to that person. That person has, is, is immoral, unethical, and we should not be doing anything for that person. So I don't think it's about handing out tax abatements to people because they're sixty-five years old. It's about preventing people from having to move out of their homes or having their homes taken away from them by a dazzling. Those are the ones that are very, forget about the person who's making eighty-eight thousand bucks a year that doesn't wanna pay the full tax, let them pay their taxes. So I would say, limit total abatements might be something to, and, and.
I don't think we can do that.
Well, you gotta, I think you're gonna have to talk to something on your own that's very creative.
Yeah, if we can.
And maybe even take on the state, you know, like, let's show some spirit. But, limit the total abatements, or limit the income, or, um, look at their tax as a percentage of their income, um, and don't make age necessarily the matrix, so that everybody, Tom, Dick and Harry that's sixty-five.
Well, yeah, we wanna help.
Comes in and says, give me.
Fixed income people.
Because really, that's what it's about, that's what I'm aiming to do. I don't want us to be put out of their house, but I certainly wanna see somebody that's making eighty-eight grand pay the extra six fifty.
I promise.
No problem.
So.
And it's about that.
Well, this is not complicated enough, so, um, add something. So there could be a sliding abatement, just like in your taxes, income taxes. If somebody's at the eighty thousand level, they don't get the full abatement, they only get twenty percent.
We can't write that, can we?
Okay, but if somebody only makes thirty thousand, they get a hundred percent.
I mean, the floating thing, can that be adjusted per income?
Well, yeah, so, so here's where we have a little bit of, a trick, and it leads to something that I've been slowly, I don't wanna overpromise on this, I don't know if it'll work, but the problem right now is that this is a state clause, we can adopt it or we cannot adopt it. The state legislature said this is a thing that towns can do. There's about four other programs, this is the most generous of them. The second most generous of them is the one that we currently have. So there's like this big gap in between. So, a lot of people that I've spoken to have said, well, what if you did this differently? What if you did this differently? And for a long time, my take on this has been, we can't do that. But the more I've been sitting in charter review, the more I've been wondering, what if we just wrote a petition for a special act?
Well, what I want to do, and I'll take this out, is talk to Dan Carey and find out what, if he can talk to DOR, but apparently, I talked to Valerie, and we can set up a stabilization account for seniors and try to help them in some way, and she knows a little bit more about DOR rules. So I wanna find out what the DOR will allow, because they're, they're the, the big guys in all this, because if they don't allow us, taxation is under their control, how we deal with it is under their control. They want all cities and towns to tax the right way, so everybody doesn't move to the town with it, just, nobody's paying any taxes. So, what I'm getting at is I'd like to find out through Dan, what we can do, and what programs are there, more so, not, not just the informal, look it up and see what laws there are, but the informal, what is out there, what can a city and town do? Because unless, can we write something in a special act? Can we do it any other way?
I mean.
If we can, then we can do something, but.
'Cause, 'cause we can do that, like, we're doing that right now with the liquor licenses, right? We're saying, the state, the state says, here's the quota, and we're saying, we want to write a special act saying we want a different quota. If we took this as a basis, made it have a slightly saner income limit, had maybe.
Get the loopholes out of that.
Yeah, just maybe take, put a, put a sane asset limit in, um, so that the number, so that, you know, maybe peg it to the poverty line or something like that.
Or if we, if we, if we could write an anti-lean law, if we could write an ordinance that says, a senior of a certain income cannot lose their house because they can't pay their property, property taxes because of an override, I mean, that's simple, but I don't know if we can do that.
Yeah, I think that these are all things that are.
We have to look into it.
Well, I mean, let's, let's, let's acknowledge the elephant in the room, which is that every East Hampton taxpayer is subsidizing one of the wealthiest landowners in town. I mean, I mean, it's a, it's a reality, and it's not only are we subsidizing them, but we are actively losing money on a yearly basis from children that live on a campus that doesn't pay property taxes, going to different school systems. And if that money was recouped, that, that, that money would offset any increase in taxes due to the new school buildings.
I don't.
And I mean, and so I think it's important to just say that, because, you know, that should be something we should talk to Dan about, that it should be illegal for a, a non, uh, property tax paying entity to send school, uh, children out of district, and then the East Hampton taxpayers subsidize that.
Yeah, we should, I, I agree that that, that, there's a particularly cruel twist there with how much we pay to send certain educational institutions.
Charter schools.
Students to charter schools, where they don't pay into the fund, but we pay out of the fund. I agree that that's not fair.
There's a lot of unfairness there, but that's not why we're.
But, but I think it ties into this, I, I mean, I, I think that you can't look at these, they're, they're, that inequity is causing an imbalance in our, in our base, and that imbalance is causing this imbalance with our seniors.
Right.
But they're connected.
So, I agree, so here's where I am on this. I don't think this is the program that we need, I hate that because I really.
You want us to try and help some.
Yeah, I mean, look, my, our precincts are heavily populated by the sorts of people who could potentially benefit from this program, so, I mean, I think we're on the same page. This is constituent service, I wanted to make this work. I, as this is currently structured, I don't think this is the right program. I, what I want to, what I would suggest we do is dismiss it without prejudice, because maybe somebody can change my mind, maybe there's some thing about this that I'm overlooking. I don't wanna, and, and frankly, you know, if, if, if enough seniors really wanted to do this, they can always collect the signatures to put it on balance. to put it on the ballot. But like, I, I really think that like-
Well-
In terms of whether I would personally endorse this right now, no, I, I wouldn't. But I do think we, we can't, we can't drop this issue. So I do think we need to talk.
I'm not sure I wanna say without prejudice, and I'll say why. Because that would suggest that we don't have an opinion on it. Doesn't it say that? I mean, I can't dismiss, I, I wanna dismiss it because it's a flawed program. Saying without prejudice says that I don't have a judgment on it, prejudgment on it, and I do.
That's my perspective.
That's my perspective on it. When you dismiss something without prejudice, it's because you don't have enough information maybe, to make a judgment on it at that time. And you want the council to be able to bring it back. If the council wanted to bring this back, it would have to have changed for me to, for a new judgment.
If it changed, if it materially changed, then-
Then we could bring it back, because it wouldn't be the same program. So I'm not sure why you wanna say that, except it, it is a way of saying, I wish there was something else we could do.
I just wanna, I mean, I don't ever wanna take tools off the table. It is a tool. It's a flawed tool. The system we currently have is a flawed tool. Currently, we're choosing between a box of flawed tools. And my, my general, like, view is, you know, there could, I mean, I don't, I don't ever wanna take things off the table, if we don't have to. There's no cost to dismissing without prejudice.
Now, let me say this. The only reason you dismiss without prejudice is we have a six-month rule about bringing something back. And we write our rules. If somebody said, hey, I wanna bring this back, they could make a motion to suspend the rules, so it could be brought back. That's happened. But the only reason it can't come back, it's not state law, it's not city charter law, it's our rules.
Yeah.
That we say, something that's been acted on, which if we just, we say we do not want to act on this at this time, can't be brought back. But on the other hand, if we just say we don't wanna act on it this time, that's the same thing as dismissing without prejudice, because we're not acting on it. We're not saying, we're kinda saying, no, we don't wanna put it on the ballot, so yes, we are acting on it. But we could bring it back. I don't mind saying dismissing without prejudice, I just want you to know that it doesn't fit my thought of what that means. If you wanna do that, Tom, I'm happy. I'll do it, but I just don't-
So it is, so it is six months, I'm trying to-
The rule is six months.
And it's two years if we voted down.
Two years for what?
Well, I don't know. I mean, you were the chair of rules forever, but I, I was under the impression that if we vote something down, it can't be brought back for two years.
For six months.
I thought it was two years.
Two years. I don't remember that. I'll look at it.
We can take a look at the rules, but I think the material-
Because I'll put it as the next concept.
Is that if something, right. If something were to come up that we-
I think it, who knows?
Right. So, alright.
It doesn't matter. We'll dismiss-
Yeah, I mean, the point is-
Dismiss it without prejudice is fine.
Okay, so, my sense is that we do that, but my other sense is that we need to get with, with Representative Carey ASAP. And one thing I would, I am actively interested in pursuing, is whether or not by special act of the legislature, we could adopt a more sane program that was a better fit for East Hampton. I think there's a case to be-
Well, I'd like to find out, and we do that through Stan.
And I could, and I think it would be important to include the, the lean piece.
Yeah, I think that's-
Anything we want to do. What we wanna know is what we can do by special act. And then we write our own special act, or what can we do right now by ordinance?
There might be other, other programs. I mean, there are other programs.
Preventing, preventing someone from losing their home is a biggie.
Yeah, I want us to continue to actively research this, but I don't think this is the program. I'm sorry. I mean, that, I hate to say it, but I, I just don't.
I'll make a motion that we dismiss this without prejudice.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
I'm, Joe's on this committee.
He's subbing in for Joe.
Oh, you are. You're subbing for Joe, and he's on the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So I can second it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Alright. Okay. I gotta go up and get my briefcase, because I'm a little worried it's getting stolen. So I'll be right back. But you guys talk about the-
Municipal property?
Yeah, yeah.
I wanna talk about that rule change, but that's not important.
Yeah, let's talk about that too.
But the other one is, is the, people might be here to talk about the telecom thing.
Telecom.
And I'm totally in favor of it, so.
Okay, yeah.
I'll be right back. I'm hoping.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
This will be a continuing conversation.
Are you looking out, since he's getting his briefcase, right?
Yeah, listen, do you wanna take a five minute recess?
Are you surprised at how few people showed up with an interest in this? No?
This is, this is a good crowd for a subcommittee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know.
Okay.
Jesus.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening.
I'll be with you.
Tom, low rating also. Don't we have to somehow, when we look at a span of time between now and 2035, don't we have to make certain assumptions that our real property tax base will go up significantly because more people, more young people will be moving into the community, more houses will be built, the ferry street project?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And how do you factor that in?
New growth.
It's all speculative.
It is. I mean, like, so basically, the projections that my office produces is frankly not seeing a ton of, of growth in East Hampton. It's seeing like, I mean, now it could be that when we get the consensus 2020 data, and we, like, it turns out that trends have changed. Cause those are based on historical change.
Sure.
And if we start seeing change now, the projections will update. But that's what we're seeing, like, the projections that we currently work with on a state level.
Right. Well, and another thing to consider is that, you know, if one ferry street comes online, when it does, that's gonna be a significant bump in the new growth for that.
Yeah.
But, you know, we have a pretty static amount of land that could be used for building. You know, we're not land rich. And so for new growth, there's, you know, even in the last sixteen years that I've been on the council, we've had some, it's, you know, it's tempered.
Sure.
Just because we're running out of land.
Sure.
So.
Since we're all here, do we wanna do seventeen, or?
Well, they're here for, are they here to talk about?
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's talk about municipal light plants really quick.
Yeah, there's no, I don't see a downside here, Tom. Can you tell me what someone might think is a downside to that?
Well, I don't personally think there is one. But thank you for coming.
I just think the name is funky.
It is, it is a freaky name, but I think, like, the idea is that all this does is set us up to put this on the ballot this fall if we want to. We don't have to, and there's plenty of conversations we can have in the meantime. But for us to have the legal authority to put things up on the wire, we need to adopt this. Even if we get the legal authority, we never have to do it.
Well, we need the money.
And so, but, the money to do the light plant?
The money to do, if we were to put, if we were to decide, we put it on the ballot, we're putting on the ballot just the right to-
The right to do it.
Do it. It doesn't say to the ta, to the, to the people, if you give us this right, we're gonna spend ten million dollars to do this right away. We're not gonna say that.
And then obviously-
We're not doing that.
Right. And then if we had to, like, depending on how we wanted to fund that, if that were to, like, further impact, if there were to be any additional costs beyond what you could expect as taxpayers, then that would then obviously require a second vote or approval. But the thought that is, has, that this is honestly something that like, unlike a school, like, this comes with a lot of revenue, if we were to do it, right? You know, Charter is currently collecting how much for each year?
Let me get it, let me ask you a question. Is this so that a city entity, like Holyoke's, like their own electric company, would actually run an internet, or run an internet service, like Charter has Spectrum?
So that's what Westfield is currently doing, and it's incredible.
And they're gaining income from that.
Yeah, Greenfield had a couple of hiccups, but-
Greenfield, yeah.
But that's interesting to know the data on that. I didn't know that.
Oh man, come to one of our telecom meetings, it's crazy stuff. Basically, the idea is that they're putting up, okay, so, little economics thing for a second. When you have a natural monopoly, what that means is that there isn't like a legal monopoly. A second company, Comcast could come in and run wires along the poles, just like Charter does. But why would they? They'd only get, what, half the market share? So, as a result, Charter has what's basically called a natural monopoly. They, no one has an incentive to compete against them.
Well, and they also have a-
As a result-
They have a monopoly because we've signed an exclusive agreement with-
Oh, we have, yeah.
The city has one?
We have not signed an exclusive agreement. Anyone else?
For cable?
Yeah. Well, I don't know for cable.
No, for cable, we definitely haven't.
For internet, we definitely haven't.
Yeah. So for cable, we definitely have.
So, so, I, I haven't actually reviewed that section, but for the, for the internet, anyone else, in fact, Verizon provides internet for DSL. Anyone else could, could provide internet. But there's, there's not much of an incentive. So, there's basically two ways that municipalities have done this. One of them is to set up their own ISP. That's what Web City Fiber does, and it's incredible. It's the same price basically as Comcast or Charter or anything like that. But it's so much faster.
How did they fund, so they put up all their lines?
Yeah.
How did they, where'd the capital come from? Their own money?
They bonded for it. They have like a twenty-year bond.
They have a twenty-year bond, and the reason they did that, they didn't have to go to the voters for the bond?
I don't think they had to, because, well, first of all-
They looked at the income that we're getting to pay for.
Right. And also, they already have, so this is Westfield Gas and Electric. This is the difference between East Hampton and Westfield. Westfield Gas and Electric already exists, and they were actually looking at this, saying, how can we diversify, because with solar coming in, we're seeing our revenues come in debt. And they said, well, if we got into internet. They've already got these train line workers, they already got, you know, the equipment.
Sleepwalk structure.
So they, they put these, so they bonded, they put these things up, and they, they're expanding their planet, they're, they're looking to pay their bond down sooner than expected. And now what they're doing is they're actually going out to neighboring communities and setting up their internet for them. So, a lot of the hill towns right now, they got grants to do stuff like that, they're doing that. But a lot of like, a lot of, like HG&E is doing a similar thing with South Hadley.
That part of it is amazing to me. I just didn't know that. I didn't know that this was an income generating kind of possibility.
Well, think of it like this. You bond for ten million dollars, right? And then you've got, say that thirty percent of seven thousand households is, is paying fifty, sixty bucks a month for this, instead of fifty, instead of sixty, seventy bucks a month for charter, cable, internet. That, that's gonna, that's gonna pay that down, you know? Given you've also got costs of operation.
I'm sure you can project it.
Yeah, and so that's one of the things that the telecom committee is trying to do right now, is we're actually looking into, what are the best ways, given that we have a budget of zero dollars, to get a sense of what the cost of putting it up would be, and what the operating cost would be, and what sort of revenue targets we'd be looking at, so that we can actually make a pitch for doing this.
Did you say Holyoke has done as well?
Holyoke is weird. They have, they provide municipal internet to commercial clients. They haven't hooked it up for residential clients yet, but their G&E has been paid by other municipalities.
To come set it up.
To come set it up. So Leverett, for instance, was not a MLP. They adopted this through town meeting, because they don't have a city council.
Right.
And they, and they paid Holyoke, and Holyoke came in.
Why does this have to go on the ballot?
Because that's the general law. I mean, I don't-
So question, so this is a request to consider a municipal light plant. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, if we had a municipal light plant, it could open up possibilities beyond just fiber, correct? Like, if we wanted to do micro hydro and do battery-driven solar panels and create our own grid in the future, is there a reason why that would be?
We would have the legal authority to do so. I'm sure there are abundant logistical things that would have to be considered.
I'm not concerned with the logistics.
Yes.
I'm concerned of the, the thought.
But what this would allow us to do-
I like how you're thickening out the buck.
I mean, and I think that as we go on, like, Newton is doing a really cool thing with municipal aggregation. I sent you that article.
Yeah.
But there, so there is, where they're, basically what they're doing is buying up power.
I think we should build a golf course myself.
That's-
I am retiring in a month.
So, so, I mean-
So, so, so just to, just to bring this back home for a second.
Yeah.
What we are talking about is, in order to become municipal light plant, the municipality needs to take two votes in two separate fiscal years, and then they need to put it to the voters. So, if we do this now, or in a few months, if we need to consider other things, if we do this now, then come July and August, we could take that second vote.
Do it again.
And then we could put it on the ballot.
I'm on a favor, because we have to do it in July in order to get it on the ballot, because then the ballot has to be like September or something.
Right, yeah. And so otherwise, our options are wait till 2021, which probably wouldn't kill us, because getting like the actual planning done to do this is gonna take a couple of years, but why bother? Like, why not just do it now if you can?
You might have to educate the voters as to what, what are we doing with a municipal light plant? They might think we're building an electric company.
Yeah, so no, we absolutely will. But, I mean, man, there's so much, you, you don't spend that much time on social media, I respect that. But there's a lot of really strong opinions about the options that we currently have for internet. And, like, it's not gonna, I mean, well, whatever. It's up to the voters to decide. I don't anticipate there being a ton-
A lot of blowback?
I, I mean-
All I have to do is say, allows us to consider our own internet service in the future.
And it doesn't cost anything to create-
It does not cost anything. This is not costing anything.
And just to be clear, there's another way of doing this, which is, Wilbraham does, is, they don't have their own ISP, but they put the fiber lines up, and they go to every other internet service provider in the world, and say, if you want to provide internet to the houses of East Hampton residents, you can do so, and you can lease that last mile of transmission from us.
Huh, wow.
So then you have, so that's another way of doing that.
But why would they do that unless they saw a need for more capacity? Cause the reason to go fiber is more capacity, right?
Fiber, the capacity of fiber is unbelievable.
I know, but right now, I get a lot of people complaining because of the speed limitations on cable, but-
So there's, that's part of it. And the other part of it is that if you're leasing it out to different people, you have competition. And you can set terms. A lot of people are upset about net neutrality, right? So, you can say, if you want to sell internet to East Hampton residents, the contract has to include net neutrality. I mean, there's different ways to do it.
I'd love to have, I'd love to be able to go to different providers.
But if we had, I mean, if we had an MLP, there's no reason that we couldn't do that as well.
No, no. Either way, if we wanna put things on the grid, whether we wanna lease it out to third parties, whether we wanna run it ourselves, one way or another, we need to do this. If we want to do this before 2022, we need to take this vote before the end of June.
And I think this, this could potentially create some interesting opportunities to, as regionalization, like looking at our, our neighbor, our joining partners, and how could we work together towards-
Right, yeah. So a lot of the people, not saying that we would be necessarily, that Westfield is necessarily the people we would partner with if we chose a partner, but a lot of communities that partner with Westfield. Westfield puts up their grid. Westfield provides tech support and customer service and sales stuff. So if you have a problem, you know, then they, they take a fee for doing that. But the idea is that since they already have that infrastructure set up, they, they can.
You don't have to.
And so you don't have to pay municipal employees to be sitting around ready to do that. But, you know, it's something, it's becoming a popular model, just because of, you know, these are things that are hard to get done on a state and federal level. Municipalities can do it. And we, you know. So I, I love it personally.
I think it's, it seems like it has no downsides to me.
I will move that we, recommended the city council that we put this on the ballot.
Okay.
Is that what, it has to go on?
Before, before that second, do you, did you want?
I just wanted to say that to build on what we were talking about before, about population growth and tax base growth, there is a proposal that was brought up in the State House already, of paying people like ten thousand dollars to move out to rural areas.
That's never gonna pass, but, that's never gonna pass.
Well, whether it does or not, it's still on the table.
Yeah.
And, and as long as they're able to work remotely, rather than living in Boston, they can work for a Boston company and live out here.
It's true that like-
That's gonna demand something like this in terms of internet access, high-speed, low-cost internet access.
It's true. If you talk to a lot of the-
Reaching to the choir, I agree.
Yeah. Actually, if you talk to a lot of the people in their thirties or forties that are living here, many of them were working somewhere else and, you know, worked out a deal. One of the members of our telecom advisory committee, his wife works for LinkedIn, right? And in California, she flies out a few times for business trips, but most of the day she's logging onto her computer. But when they have internet issues, I mean, I work from home tomorrow. When I do, like, trying to upload large packets of data over cable is, it's just like, like, if I try and save an Excel file to a shared drive, it's like a minute loading. Because that's one difference, I don't mean to digress too much, but one of the differences between cable and fiber is that cable has a certain download speed and then a much slower upload speed. Back, so if you're a business that's sharing data, that's a problem. If you've got fiber, it's bidirectional and it's fast.
I don't mean to push, Tom, but I've been quick since fiber. I don't mean to push, Tom, but I've been here since 5.
Oh, sorry, yeah, all right, so, cool, sorry, all right, all those in favor?
Aight.
Great.
17.
17D.
We just went through, I just want to bring up something, I just got informed by virtue of the fact that JP wanted to get this information about the city attorney fees that we've been paying, and I found out that every time I called the city attorney in the past, .6.
Six minutes.
Six minutes, $75. So, one of the reasons I put this out there is we have a new city attorney, it costs more, and it's not saying that a city councilor, certainly not the chair of the ordinance committee, can't call the city attorney for opinion, it's just having a filter, so that that request isn't frivolous.
And if I recall correctly, what it was, I'm sorry, I didn't print it out, it was that they need presidential approval, and if the president disapproves, you can move and override the president's approval.
I didn't put that language in, but that's something Joe thought of, and I apologize, we could add that, what it means, Omar's looking, is that if there was something going on in which somebody thought the mayor and the, and the president were trying to do something, collude about attorney thing between the council, there ought to be a way for the council to override it. And let me say that that's true, but this is a rule, and I'll say this again, the council, by virtue of a majority vote, can always override their rule and say, we want this opinion.
So that's redundant, really?
Well, it is, but I don't mind it being in the rule.
Okay.
Omar had his hand up.
Yes, I had a conversation with Joe about it, because when there was a proposal, that was my concern, my concern was like, wait, I mean, I never called the city solicitor to ask anything, but I was, I was thinking, if, wait, if the president don't want me, because he think what I'm going to ask to the city solicitor is, is no good, and he can deny it, and then my free speech as a city council is restricted, that's what I see it that way, it's like, I, I get it, I know that it costs a lot of money, I get that part. What I see is like, why you don't want me, so every time I have to ask, even if we disagree, and then if the, if the president don't agree with me, and he have a strong, it's like, like our, the President of the United States, he is someone that barely you can talk, so, and he said, you know what, no, I'm not asking the lawyer.
Well, you have to have a reason, you have, you want a way to go around the president.
Exactly.
Well, I think that should be, I have no problem with that, it should be in the rule, but the reason we brought it up is because we've had people just making calls, I did, I did as chairman of the Charter Review Committee, but, and I think the ordinance chair should be able to make those calls. All he's going to do is say, Joe, I have to call the city attorney about this, I just want you to know about it, because it, it has to be done.
But, like I said, I, I agree 100% with that.
Okay.
And the only way that I disagree is tying our hands as a councilor to say, no, you cannot act, you have to ask first to the president, and then the president decide if we can.
Well, I was kind of, you know, I kind of thought that as well, because, you know, I've never been restricted to be able to call the city, but, and then I, then I thought about it, and, and tonight sealed it for me, like, seeing how much money it costs the city for us to get an opinion, and so, and also.
Omar, you need to have these, these things.
And, and, and the other hand, like I said, which, who those councilors are doing, I think is wrong.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You shouldn't call the lawyer every time you have something.
And I, and I think that there, this has been, this has been abused in the past.
Exactly, and as a councilor, you have to know, you know, don't abuse of that.
Well, now that I know how much it costs me to ask for a five-minute conversation, I'm going, wait, I got to make sure that there is a reason for me to call.
Right.
Exactly, and that, and that's why I'm stuck, you know, I really like the idea to don't spend that much, that much money on the lawyer, but on the other hand, I don't want to be handcuffed.
Well, the other thing we were looking at, to be honest with you, we had our original conversations with Nicole about how do we access the city attorney? Originally, I was kind of hoping they were going to have a firm, and in that firm would be one partner that would deal with the city council, and one partner that would deal with the mayor, because you often have, we had a disagreement over the chief of staff position, for instance, and, you know, that went against the mayor. We don't know what will happen when that happens, but what I don't want, I want our president to make these decisions, not the mayor.
True.
Because the mayor appoints the city attorney, see what I'm getting at? Now, not that that's going to happen, but if the chair of the ordinance committee calls or, or has a, needs an opinion on an ordinance, which is very important, that's law, and the, the city attorney says, well, I have to get permission from the mayor, give me a break, that's a problem. Now, not that that's going to happen, and it's a, just a, you know, a really devil's advocate kind of thing, but I, I wanted the president to have this, to make sure the mayor knows there is a filter, but, and if we're going to ask, it's because it's important for us to ask.
Well, another piece of that is that we, as the city council, we don't have a budget line for the city attorney, which means we have to access this, the general city attorney fund, which is, hasn't money right now.
And again, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with your advice, you know, I think.
No, but I think you're right, add a clause in there, I'll try to write something up, we don't have to bring this forward now, let me look at what I wrote, and we'll vote on it in our next meeting.
Okay, yeah, that works.
I don't know if there's a rush, because.
I mean, well, the question that I have is whether it's, whether the clause is redundant if any rule can be overridden by a.
Yeah, but if it's right in there, it's like having a charter law that, that actually duplicates MMGO, it's right there for the council to see, the rule states that I can ask, it's right there, and they were not, we only have one vote then, because you have to override our rules, and then you have to vote on send, letting Omar's request go to the city attorney.
Right. Would it be an easy solution to simply allow, if, if somebody wants to call the city attorney and the president of the council says no, can that person who wants to call simply petition the full council?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I.
At the time, let's say you made the call, you know, on a Wednesday, and you came to the council meeting, I was told I couldn't ask to say, this is what I want to do, I'd like to make a motion to allow me to do that, and the president can defend why he said no. And you know what, this is like, oh, God, I would hope it would never come to, but the point is, we've had people, won't mention names, call the city attorney on a whim, but knowing that a 10-minute call costs 100 bucks, and I have to say, it could cost a lot more if you talk a little longer, which people do, people do that.
Right, and so maybe, I mean, the other thing is, I think that more than I'm worried about, like, the thing that I, that I'm particularly worried about is, is that there might be situations where people aren't coordinating. Someone, one person calls. Couple people call, and, and so.
And the president could say, everybody has to go for the meet, and especially chairs of committees in the past could make calls.
Right.
But I think now, because of the cost.
And also, does it make sense, I mean, if they're, if they're billing by, by length of call, does it make sense to, you know, have written correspondence be the preferred mean, like, mode of communication?
They bill by length of email.
Right.
Emails can bill too.
Concise email.
It's not, it's not just a phone call.
Yes, send this back, no more than three letters.
Billy Lynn and I are going to go to law school, because we can make a lot more money.
Yeah, that makes sense, I mean, okay, it's.
Give up your ethics.
Oh, no, 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 be nice.
So Dan, it's your thing, I'm comfortable voting on it tonight, but if you want to,